Father, who art in heaven, heaven be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The nigh is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We will start with item D, the approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minute shall stand approved from the March 18th, 2024 regular council meeting. Those will stand approved. Item E, citizen communication. If anyone in the audience or on WebEx would like to address council on anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please feel free to come forward or leave a message, and we'll be happy to acknowledge that. Item F, I'm losing my voice here. Item F reports from council committees. F1, the Finance and Budget Committee met on March 25th, 2024. And Tom.
Right, and we were recommending tonight to approve the 2024 first quarter budget adjustments. Of course, the supplementalism transfers.
Thank you, sir. Item F2, the Safety and Human Resources Committee did not meet on March 25th, 2024 due to lack of agenda items. And F3, the Technology and Communications Committee did not meet earlier tonight due to lack of agenda items. We'll move on to item H, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. H1, resolution number 009-24, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $50,000 for the purpose of designing the restructure of East Washington Street Improvements Project into awards said bid to Peterman and Associates, Inc., and declaring an emergency.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you. Andy?
Yes, Council President. In addition to the legislation that was in the package this week, there was also a memorandum from Chad. And I will allow Chad to speak to this legislation.
Yes, as I had mentioned when I brought this to you a couple of weeks ago, with some grant funding we're actively pursuing, our best chance of obtaining that funding is to do a full reconstruction on East Washington Street, which is badly needed. Because we were already in preliminary stages with the design of the sanitary sewer with Peterman, I hoped to waive the quality-based selection process and just enter into a contract with them. I have since received a proposal from them, and their number was within a half percent of the number I hoped to achieve. Their number right now, their proposal is $157,250. My goal was 150,000, so they were right where I was hoping to come in at. So if this legislation is approved, we'll negotiate that contract with them. I'm not asking for suspension or anything like that, but I, to me, it makes sense to enter into a contract with them since they've already started a portion of this project, so.
Thank you, Chad. Any questions or comments from council?
Chad, with the 850,000 grant funding, is that something that we can reimburse ourselves if we do get that?
The way, so we have three pieces of funding we're pursuing. OPWC's 325,000, we have already received that. I applied for an additional 800,000 through, we generally refer to it as DEFa, Division of Environmental Financial Assistance through the EPA. We've not had an answer on that one yet. This other one is another half million through CDBG, and this is the one that, if it's just a sewer project, we probably will not be awarded. But if we do the full reconstruction, we will score better, and it was recommended to me to go for the full reconstruction. So we actually have three. OPWC, we frequently do as a reimbursement. When we've done CDBG in the past, we used one on Meeksin Street. That was a reimbursement to ourselves. And then the DEFa one, I've had them want to pay the contractor directly, and I've had them want to reimburse us. It depends on which side of the financing they want us to come in on. I won't know the answer to that one until we get approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else from council? Okay, I'm hearing none. Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thank you again, Chad. Item H2, resolution number 010-24, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds over $50,000 for the purpose of purchasing a vehicle and snowplow for the City of Napoleon Wastewater Department into award said purchase to Dave White Chevrolet, and declaring an emergency. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Thank you. Andy?
Yes, Council President. Once again, in addition to the legislation, there's a memorandum from Jeremy Oakley, Wastewater Treatment Superintendent. He really did do his due diligence in locating this truck. It was $65,000 budgeted for this vehicle in the 2024 budget. State contract bid price is $58,241. Delivery of that is going to be in eight months. A local dealership, we've tried to work with them. They give this one for $59,695. The delivery of that was 36 months. And he was able to locate this one, Dave White Chevrolet, for $55,510, and we can take delivery immediately. And if approved this evening, I would also ask that we approve it under suspension so that we can move forward with this purchase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion for suspension?
Motion?
Second.
Thank you. Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And please call the roll for the resolution, please.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that will pass. Item H3, ordinance number 011-24, an ordinance amending a section of chapter 939 of the City of Napoleon codified ordinances, specifically section 939.05. Net metering also amending ordinance number 056-12. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Thank you. Andy?
Yes, this solar rules were taken to council August of 2023. At that time, I presented, I had a couple of entities approach me and ask me if they could go with a higher limit than what we currently allow, which is 25 kilowatts. I did some research on AMP communities and came to the committee at that time with no recommendation in terms of maximal load, just asked the committee if they would be interested in us doing more research and pursuing a higher load limit than the 25 kilowatt. At that time, both the Water Affairs and the Electric Subcommittee decided that they were not interested in pursuing anything further. So it was dropped. As you all know, Custom Ag came before this body a few months back and asked us to reconsider that, at which time I was directed to pursue further investigation. I looked, AMP, AMP has a website. They're looking forward peer exchange database, which has information for many of the communities that are members of AMP that are willing to put their stuff out there. So I looked through approximately 90 different communities, and of those 90, I found 30 where there was some information on solar rules and what they did and did not allow. And I found that two-thirds of them, 20 out of the 30 or so, allowed rules of 100 kilowatts or less. We, again, we are currently at 25. So I had some discussions with Greg and Mike out of the Electric Department, and we decided that as a step in that direction, we could go up as high as 100 kilowatts right now. And so I'm bringing that before council. I took it back to the Electric Committee and Board of Public Affairs, proposed 100 kilowatts, and got affirmative votes from both those bodies to move forward with having the law director draft the legislation. So I'm asking you tonight is to pass first reading on legislation allowing for 100 kilowatts, an increase from 25 kilowatts to 100 kilowatts. And then in addition to that, we would limit the aggregate load of 3% of our peak demand of all customers during the previous calendar year. So for instance, it's typically around 30 meg of peak demand on any, typically the summer day. And so 3% of that would be 900 kilowatts. So in addition to the 100 kilowatts that we would allow any commercial or industrial customer, we would still maintain our 25 kilowatt limit for our residential users. And I believe we currently have seven or eight residential users. So of that 900 kilowatts, 200 are already taken up by residential users. If Custom Ag decides they wanted to go with the full 100 kilowatts, then that would be up to 300. So there would still be about 600 kilowatts available for other entities to utilize solar on their property.
Thank you, Andy. Questions or comments from council?
I don't understand enough of solar power, so bear with me. So basically, I was trying to understand if we're doing solar with the city power. Is there something to be considered if they don't maintain the solar? Does that affect the city by any means?
If the customers don't, potentially, sure. Yeah, it can cause strange flickers or harmonics. There's probably other terms that are more appropriate. Those are literally terms they use. Yeah, which is one of the reasons, one of the biggest reasons that they do limit the amount that people can use.
So it would be maybe it's suggested to say that we limit that amount too because of it could cause flickering? And I'm just trying to understand the risk to the city if we're letting them do solar as well as tying on to ours, if there is something there that needs to be indemnified or risk to be considered?
Well, I don't know if you can speak to that anymore than I, but they do sign a contract. They carry $100,000 policy, insurance policy, in case there was some damage caused to the system. It's all part of requirements, part of the contract design.
Does the language for the insurance policy mention that the city should be notified if the insurance is canceled within 10, 15 days?
I don't know about that, but every single year when they come in, they have to show proof of their insurance policy. But as far as in canceling that, I don't think.
How hard is it to amend an ordinance to state that they need to notify us within a certain amount of time?
That's the time to do it.
I would suggest that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you speak a little more to the 100 kilowatt limit and the 3% peak demand? How did we arrive at that number? What was the thought process behind those limits? I know that you said two-thirds of the communities on AMP are kind of along those lines, but what drove our decision to our system of being those limits?
Basically, as you just said, and as I said earlier, it seemed to be a happy medium. We can always go more. We don't want to throw 200 or 500 or, you know, a meg out there and then all of a sudden have all these issues, and then you're pulling back. I thought, if anything, this was a good first step.
I guess I have some experience with my employer on solar. Our process that we follow is we had to pay for a detailed load study to look at the grid, and that was all on my employer's cost. And then the engineering solutions are presented after that to make sure that it doesn't affect the system. I know that there's some liability stuff. I can't speak directly to it, but I know that there's some liability things in the contract that state that we are responsible for ensuring that we don't affect their system, and that's why the detailed load study was done and the engineering solutions were made. Is that something that we've considered putting into this resolution that they would be in charge of that detailed load study to make sure that they're not affecting us and that those engineering solutions are in place before we were to grant them? Or is it more of a, I guess I didn't see much in that language, and I'm asking, is that something that we need or is that something that we should do?
We can do that. It just adds another hurdle. I think that's why we felt like 100 kilowatts was a safe number right now, that we wouldn't have to go that route.
I'm just trying to balance their ask of 420, and we're basically granting a quarter.
Right.
So I'm trying to be aware of that, and I'm trying to be, trying to consider what the business is working towards in a way. So I guess I'm trying to understand, is that 100 kilowatts the right number? I'm looking for anybody's opinion on council or any experts on.
I think one thing we discussed in committee was this is a good compromising point, I think, for both parties, and a good starting place. This will be the first major industry within the city's network to have solar. So taking that first step to really get into the ballgame. I don't know if we want to overcommit ourselves at this point, but I think in talking to Andy and to Greg, we felt it was a great starting point. Minigates our risks some and also provides the business an opportunity to receive some of these credits. So in my opinion, I would 100% vote to pass this resolution.
Council President Durham?
Yes, please.
If I could adjust, bring to your concerns, the letter that we send out to the individuals every year states that a minimum of $100,000 in liability insurance naming of the city as an additional insured, this must be updated at least annually or anytime your insurance provider changes. So while I'll double check and make sure we have that verbiage, what you were talking about, within a 10-day notice, it may already be in there.
I say it because it's not. It was more of the, hey, it's not there, so let's suggest it.
So it's not that well-defined then?
In the ordinance, it is not there.
Okay.
And part of it is, if they don't, what's the recourse? Because not having the liability is huge if something goes wrong. But I'm glad that we are also indicating in a letter that.
Yeah, the letter states needs to be updated annually anytime your insurance provider changes or anytime insurance. But again, if it's not in the ordinance, that's just us telling them.
I didn't see it, but Billy, if you can double check that.
It's not in the ordinance, but it is in the contract, I notice, so.
Do they both need to mirror each other or?
I don't think so. I don't think the ordinance would necessarily need that. I don't think it would hurt anything either to list some of your concerns in the ordinance and be easy enough to add if that's what council wanted to do.
Okay. Yeah, if we don't have an issue with contradicting terms, you know.
I think we're good.
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Brittany, did you want to make any amendment to the ordinance as it stands now?
From what I'm hearing, the contract says that there is, that they are to be notified.
Your concerns, I think, are covered in the contract. I don't think it would be necessary in the ordinance, but if you wanted that language in the ordinance, certainly, I'll draft it.
No, yeah, I agree with you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Andy, I was in the original Electric Committee, and I know we discussed concerns of potential problems with our system and these types of systems. And maybe we guarded on the safer side. Is that, would that be, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is the risk at this point, in your mind, manageable or reasonable at these levels?
Absolutely.
Very well, thank you.
Which is why I feel so many of those that I have looked at are at 100 kW or less.
And we have reasonable recourse if there are problems with any of the provide or any of the people that are pushing back on our system, and we have immediate recourse to take.
Correct.
And that's all I need to know. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I am hearing none. Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That'll move on to second read. Item H4, ordinance number 012-24, an ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation measure, supplement number one for the year 2024, and declaring an emergency. Is there a motion?
Motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Kevin, you want that one?
Sure, thank you, Council President. This is what we call the first quarter budget adjustments, and these are budget increases. I will be more than happy to entertain any specific increase that you see before you. This was discussed at our Finance and Budget Committee meeting, and it was passed to move along here. I do ask for suspension just because it allows us to close out the quarter in a timely fashion. But again, I will entertain any questions about the budget increases for the first quarter.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions or comments? I am hearing none. Marissa, please call the roll. Actually, I'm sorry, before I do that, is there a motion for suspension?
All motion.
Second.
Thank you. Marissa, please call the roll for suspension.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And please call the roll for the ordinance, please.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
We'll move on to item H5, ordinance number 013-24, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to make appropriation transfers. Transfer of appropriation one from one appropriation line item to another appropriation line item pursuant to ORC Section 5705.40 for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, as listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Thank you. Kevin?
Thank you, Council President. The difference between this one is this is not a budget increase. This is where we budget from one line item and slide that budget amount over to another line item, so it's a trade, very slight what we had the first quarter, which is not surprisingly. We had one from Muni Court and then one from the Rec Department. We do prefer that this happens because this is no increase to our overall budgets. But again, this was discussed at the Finance and Budget Committee. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to entertain that, and if not, we do ask for suspension again.
Any questions or comments? I'm hearing none.
Motion for suspension?
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Marissa, please call the roll for suspension.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And please call the roll for the ordinance.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move to item I, second reading of ordinances and resolutions. I1, resolution number 007-24, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $50,000 for the purpose of performing the 2024 sanitary sewer flow monitoring update into award said bid to Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., and declaring an emergency. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Yes, Council President. Described in previous meetings, this is an exercise that is required by the Ohio EPA. I'm not sure, I guess I'll defer to Chad. Are we going to ask for suspension or not?
No, not tonight. I'm still trying to negotiate terms with this firm.
So other than that, there are no changes to the legislation.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Okay, I'm hearing none. Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
All right, that'll move to third read. We'll move to item J, third reading of ordinances and resolutions. J1, ordinance number 003-24, an ordinance amending sections 925.07, 925.12, 925.13, 925.16, 925.17, 925.19, and 925.22 of the City of Napoleon, Ohio codified ordinances as they relate to refuse service. Also amending ordinance number 082-04 and 062-18, rules for disposal at the city's yard waste collection site. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Thank you. Andy?
Yes, as, just to review the legislation for you this evening, moves the refuse rates to $20 a month and allows for a $4 bag tag with two-bag limit. And anything over that, if it's not tagged, each bag costs $6 to pick up basically. We're back to what the original legislation. How it was proposed.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from council?
Well, you did, we're also doing a third read on the, oh, you were talking about people that, yard people for $200 instead of $1,000, so that's.
That's all part of this.
Right, I just wanted to remind that that is part of it.
Correct. Thank you.
I'll get the last word, I guess, if we need to. We've been down this road a little bit, as we all know. I heard the last meeting that it was suggested to follow the committee on what their suggestion was. Obviously, the committee makes decisions on what is presented to them at the time. For me, I try to make this decision by an informed decision, and I don't feel that the committee did so. Not that the committee obviously commits time, and I do appreciate that time. But I did not hear any conversation from the committee that they reached out to Werler, and I could be butchering that name. Is that right? Okay. On what our new pricing would be,[1693.13] Um, so I did that and discovered that there will be estimated, um, a ten per, ten to eleven percent increase for the city in regards to recycling. Again, she said, don't take that verbatim, but that's kind of what she's looking at right now with the way the C P I increases. So understanding that on a recycling basis, it, it basis, if we have other people recycling, if we advocate for that, which is great, that's, that is a good problem, but then also a bad problem, because then our recycling costs go up. So with the understanding that we are already going to have an increase in January of twenty five with right recycling, and I'm estimating, obviously, with the higher, higher number, and this was, Andy gave me the two thousand nineteen higher budget. We are looking, and again, we're, we're in estimate with four hundred and seventy three point eight three tons in two thousand nineteen with a ten percent increase going to forty nine dollars and fifty cents. We are looking at an increase of twenty three thousand four hundred and fifty five as it stands on these numbers. I don't know where that looks like, but I'm guessing in twenty four, we are going to see an increase. So with that, I would suggest that we go to the twenty one dollars of the waste recycling, mosquito, and the package that it is with the two and four back tag. Recognizing that for the city to grow, if we don't grow in this, in the aspect of revenue and cost, because Andy, it's been since what, two thousand nineteen?
Uh, since we've increased these rates?
Yes.
No, it's twenty, twenty, fifteen years ago, twenty twelve.
Even more to my point, even more to my point then. So with that being said, we're just going to be stagnant where we are. We're not going to accept the fact that we want growth because we're not going with inflation. We're not increasing. So again, I suggest it go to the twenty one, understanding that the committee did not make an informed decision because they did not have the information they needed to make that decision.
Just to that point, um, when we, we did reach out to Werler at the beginning of this process, three months ago, they wouldn't give us a number.
No.
They would not provide us.
Okay.
They wouldn't tell us ten percent or eleven percent, nothing. They just, they figured there would probably be an increase, but they couldn't tell us what it would be. So we did reach out to them.
But then again, the committee should not have tried to make a suggestion on what we, where the city should go if we don't know where our expenses are going to be in twenty four. That, that is my opinion.
Well, we had to make some decision.
Well, we didn't make it for fifteen years, so.
Right, and that's the reason it was brought up, and that's the reason, uh, action was taken, uh, by the, uh, city manager. And we did the best we could to come up with the best answers that we could that would be fair to everybody. My concern is if we go back to the proposal where it's two and four dollars, we're putting an unfair tax upon the people that use two bags or less, and there's several people that use less than a bag. And you can see that most of the city is able to get most of their refuge in, into two bags. Recycling, we talked about, there's some cities that have done away with recycling altogether and put it in the trash. That's not something I think we want to do either.
No.
We gave the best, I feel the city manager gave the best suggestion possible when it was presented to the committee. And the committee tried to come up with the best answer, and there was a lot of debate going on with that. But we did not know that it was going to be increasing ten percent, but I think feel it's wrong to, uh, put the burden upon the people that use less trash to help somebody else pay for a third and fourth bag.
Um, so the people that are paying for the less, are they using mosquito spraying, the yard waste?
Of course they are, but they've got half, but, uh, previous to this, we had, uh, we were only allowed one bag of trash, and for no cost, we increased it to two bags of trash.
Still using mosquito spraying, yard waste?
Of course.
Okay.
However, those people that use less, how is it fair to them to have them help pay for somebody else's third and fourth bag?
How is it fair for people that have storm damage in the city to pick it up, but other people don't, because it's in the same package?
It, it's just where I stand. I feel.
I agree. I understand, yeah.
It, it's okay to disagree. I just feel that we.
I understand, I guess I'll interject. I understand Brittany's point, and I think it's valid. I, we look at it, and I think, you know, we're, we have to look at it more often. We look at it annually, obviously, and Andy's has reiterated that more than once. You know, if we look at the twenty, we, where are we going? Are we going to look at twenty twenty three actual, you know, where we might be in twenty four? Are we going to look at budget twenty four, which would be very conservative, as I said last two weeks ago? Or are we going to look at projected? Those are numbers that, you know, it's been suggested that twenty twenty three might be relevant. You're going to have an increase, as you said, with Werler, but you also, we will have an increase of, I think, with the tag usage, but I think a review of it. We're still projecting if we had, if everything was as twenty twenty three, as I said last, last time, we would be at about a hundred thousand dollars to the re, to the, to the benefit, to the black. That's where the number would be. So if we have to take, you know, uh, we're increasing, so that includes the four dollar tags minus what we would have for an increase. But we'll continue to look at it annually, I think would be our answer. Um, because we don't want to be surprised, and, and to your point a little bit, what if people stop using some of the recycling out at Oakwood, you know, contractors, et cetera? But I think it's, if we look at it annually, I think we'll do our due diligence. So that, that's my opinion, but I understand yours as well.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
I think it's my time to thank you for your research. Last time you thanked me for counting to seven hundred, this time you went above and beyond. So thank you for doing that. And just to echo a little bit of what Tom said, and, and I think you said it, you were, the count, or the committee was making a decision with the information they had. In January, we know that there's going to be an increase. We don't know what that increase is yet. So I guess personally.
At a minimum.
At a minimum, but it could be more, right?
She said ten or eleven.
Could be more, could be less. We don't know. We're, we're hoping for less. I would like to make an informed decision at that point, when I know where numbers are going to be. And I'm okay, like with Tom said, is, I'm okay looking at this again annually. It's kind of fun, so.
Yeah.
So I guess my point is, I'd like to see all of that data come in, and if we do have to look at it again, we can. It's not like we're at the breaking point with this account where it's going to put us in jeopardy of anything. Um, I think it's a revenue enhancement that's been mentioned multiple times. So I think that we are, we are minimizing for now, and if we need to readjust, we can.
We don't, I feel we don't want to overcharge, but we don't want to undercharge. And that's the reason why maybe annually or every two years, this should be seen again and readjusted. It will, will need to be readjusted, probably, but let's not overcharge and let's not undercharge. Let's do the best we can with what we have right now.
This is a good starting point, because it hasn't been done for many years. So I think we should start with this point, and then we have annual reviews of it. Then you can make informed decisions, but we gotta, you gotta have a starting point to go from.
As a resident, when does it come to the point where, oh, the city is going to raise the rates again? Oh, another year, here we go. When, when does a resident sit back and say, okay, they raised the rates because they didn't for fifteen years? But now it's, we might just do it every year. So that, in my opinion, as a resident, that's my question.
As a resident, I'm happy that my council's minimizing that cost the best that they can and not over adjusting to, to what may occur. So I'm okay with them looking at it annually and adjusting accordingly. I guess to me, that's, I would be happier with a council doing that than I would be, oh, they adjusted the extra dollar to make sure that they were covered for the ten or eleven percent that may come, or what if it's more and we have to adjust even further? So I guess I, I just want to see all the cards that are on the table before we go adjusting again.
But we're adjusting, oh, go ahead, Kevin.
The citizens are going to the grocery store every week, and they're seeing an increase at the grocery store every week. That's something that they have to have. They also realize that everything in their life right now, because of the situation in the world, is totally undetermined. So you live with what you got.
I'd agree with that, that comment. However, we haven't done this in fifteen years, and we're talking about inflating it from eighteen to twenty one dollars. I feel like, as a city.
That's only one third of one percent per year.
That if we want the city to grow, we need to consider the revenue, and again, we are bringing revenue in, as Tom pointed out. But I don't feel like we are looking at it in the aspect of growth. We're being stagnant. Again, we all have our own opinions, and I mean that, I, I agree that we've all had made good points. But that's kind of where I'm at. I understand.
All right. Is there a motion to amend the ordinance before I call roll?
I motion.
I'll second.
To twenty one a month? And back tags at?
Two and four.
Two dollars?
Yeah, two and four.
Okay. Marissa, please call the roll for the amendment.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Tom?
No.
Dr. Dave?
No.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Ken?
No.
Uh, we will call roll for the ordinance as presented this evening.
Bob?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
No.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
That will pass on third read. We'll move to item K, Good of the City. Item K one, discussion or action, update on current C R A agreements. Andy?
I need to get my paperwork together here. This was, uh, I know as those of you that have been on council in previous years, the seven C R A agreements would come before the, they would go before the Texas Senate Review Council over at C I C for a review. Then they would come here for a housing council review prior to this meeting, and then you would have your chance to review them as well. Last year, Senate Bill thirty three, um, changed all of that. Um, but note, they no longer have to have an annual review by the T I R C or housing councils. Um, I'm only presenting this to you this evening as a courtesy, so to speak, um, for your review. I think it's important that you see where they are. Um, so that's, that's why I included them in your packets. Um, if you have any questions on any of the seven, I, I can try to answer them. Just to, to clear, help to clear things up, American Road Holdings, um, that's Paul Martin and Sons out on, uh, American Road. Uh, Janmar Properties, uh, the Westview Villas on Claremont Avenue. Um, Just Bush Investments, uh, that's the Emporium, Emporium. Um, Kester Corporation, obviously, is out on Commerce Drive. M S G Investments, that, those are the Trail Drive Apartments. Um, Shank Properties, uh, C and C Fabrication out on Freedom Drive, and last but not least, Ventures in Space um, was for the spec building that eventually became Jack Products. So that's, and, and in regard to all of these, um, their investment and job cre- commitments, um, are at or above the agreed upon levels. So, I mean, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
No action from council required, correct?
No action required, that's correct. It was just strictly as information.
Any questions or comments? Okay, I'm hearing none. We'll move to item L. Uh, we'll go around the table. Kevin, I'm going to start with you this evening.
Oh, okay. Uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, last council meeting, it was brought up by the mayor about some issues with some door hangings, and it was suggested that we try to update our, our utility information as best we can. Um, so if you did notice, every, uh, utility bill that went out at the beginning of this month um, has a message in there that we're requesting utility customers to update their phone numbers and email addresses. Um, and we've gotten a few phone calls and a couple of people stopped in already today. So we're doing the best that we can with this. We'll also do a social media post on it. But other than forcing them to come in, we can't. We're, we're just trying to follow up on that. So I just want to make that council know that that's being worked on.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Tom? Dr. Dave? Brittany? Mr. Hayes?
I have nothing.
Ms. White?
Yes, sir.
Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you. Gives me a lot of time. No, I just want to remind, I just want to remind everybody that, uh, Oakwood Avenue, we will continue to have water disruptions out there, um, along with Kevin's point. Today, we had two, um, areas where we had to, um, go and knock on doors and hang tags because we did have shut off some water. One of them was on, on, uh, Oakwood Avenue from Perry Street to Railroad, and then the other one was down Union Street and Jaeger, all the way to Detroit Avenue. But obviously, it's a huge project. It's one of the largest the city's ever done. Um, and so there, this will continue. Obviously, we'll work to minimize those as much as possible, but just by nature of the project, we're going to have water disruptions, so. Just, uh, just a reminder, if you hear anything.
Was it turned back on?
Yes.
Okay, I checked social, social media before I left this evening, and.
Yeah, Aaron knocked in the back door right before I came over here.
Okay.
They just finished up about six thirty, four or seven.
Perfect.
Uh, it was turned on earlier than that, but the work for the day was finished and everything was turned on earlier, uh, this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that, I've just asked for a brief executive session, very brief. Thank you.
Uh, nothing for me. If we could have a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or employees, please. So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Of executive session for, uh, to consider the appointment dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or employees, please.
Motion, second.
Thank you. Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay. Item M, to approve the payment of bills. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills shall stand approved. Are there any questions?
I have one question.
Shoot.
Uh, u- utility refunds, what does that involve? I mean, if there's twenty or twenty five of them every, every month.
The utility refunds is if somebody has, when somebody signs up, that we require a, a, uh, deposit. If they are a good payer for twelve months, meaning that they pay on time, then we apply that utility deposit to their account. If they leave prior to the twelve months, or if they've not made twelve monthly on time payments, then if they come and they shut their utility off, then we would refund that deposit after their bill has been paid. So, and what I mean by not on time is, is their utilities are due on the sixteenth of each month, but we have a handful of people that will pay the additional ten percent and pay at the first of each month. So in our, by our rules, that is not on time. So they may be paying every month, it's just that they pay the extra ten percent, which we hold the deposit, so.
Okay. The payment of bills shall stand approved. Is there a motion for adjournment?
All motion.
Second.
Good. Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.